Do you predominantly officiate in whichever chapter or region you're, which you're assigned? Or do you travel all of those things?
You're the signer, so why don't you ask a question?
So yeah, typically we officiate in our region or our area. For like the central Albuquerque group, they're a little bigger association. So they actually kind of fill in and cover games throughout the state. You know, because like in Farmington, I have, you know, anywhere from 23 to 30 officials any given year. And then, you know, in Gallup, I'll have, you know, 12 to 20 at the most on a good year. So, you know, and we have quite a few games to cover. So, I mean, on a busy night, you know, I'll need like 50, close to 60 officials just to cover for our area. And if I can't, then I'll reach out to the central region and they'll cover games for me.
Do they pay for travel?
Yes. Yeah, so you'll get compensated, you know, the driver will get mileage. Everybody gets a per diem for meals, you know, over a certain amount of miles and and a rider's fee, so. So you get extra 20, 30 bucks, yeah, going on top. And the driver gets, gets his mileage, so yeah. It kind of, kind of pays the travel a little bit.
What's, what's the typical high school varsity game fee?
It went up last year, so we were getting 75, I believe, a game. And and then, you know, sub vars these was like 60, I believe, or 50, I can't really remember now. But when I first started, it was like, I think it was like $54 or something, or 60, $60 a game or something like that. Yeah. So if you travel, you know, you get your mileage and things on top of that. It was a made for a decent, decent night.
Okay, guys, let me jump in. We got six o'clock, I want to welcome everybody to the AFWA broadcast. Dennis, you want to say something, then we'll go straight to Leonard to introduce our guest?
Yeah, so like I was saying before, thanks Frank for, for joining us. Dana Pampas wishes she could be here, but she had other obligations tonight. She just wanted me to tell you that she appreciates you talking to the New Mexico officials. And that I'm sure she'll request this video and, and listen to what you had to say later.
All right, so good evening, everybody. My name's Leonard Longhorn, I'm the Northwest Regional Assigner. And I got my good friend and mentor Frank VR tonight. Just a little history, I met Frank last year. I was a part of the Stars and Stripes Academy. He was our, our mentor and we were on his, his crew. So we did weekly conference calls, rules and video study and things like that. And actually met him face to face at the National Referee Clinic last year in Dallas. And he's, he's a real good friend. I can shoot him a text during the week when I ain't got nothing to do. Just want to bother him and he always gets back to me. And whether it's football or anything else, he's always, he's always willing to talk and, you know, reach out. So Frank's Pac-12, used to be a Pac-12 umpire, now he's a referee, recently promoted. He had a few gimps last year where he was a referee. And as you can see in his bio, he's worked last year's national championship game as an umpire. The 2019 All-State Sugar Bowl, 2018 Sugar Bowl. And so he's, you know, well accomplished and and appreciate you coming on tonight, Frank, and go ahead and let you take over.
Thank you, Lucky. For those of you who don't know, Leonard's crew name last year was Lucky, Lucky Longhorn. That kind of, that kind of stuck, so feel free to use it as you see fit. But again, I want to thank you for, for inviting me. I've always felt that when you have an opportunity to, to help other officials, regardless of the level. And, and you as well are imparting your knowledge, but you're also reinforcing the things that you've learned. And that was instilled in me by several officials who mentored me. Ken Rivera, whom I think many of you know, started the Reno camps way back in 2000. Was instrumental in that and that's how it's been, is his passion is helping officials. Former supervisor of officials and current NFL referee, Tony Correlli. Wasn't it, himself was an educator. I always felt that part of being in the, in the Pac-12 was you had a fiduciary responsibility to give back to other officials, your local association. And do what you can to, to help promote the art of officiating as a hero. Thank you very much for the opportunity. And like you said, I get just as much out of presenting things as, as I do from sitting in on that. Really kind of helps reinforce things that I've learned. And feel free to ask questions because, you know, I may gloss over something or I may omit something. And then I also have a chance to. So, and, and I'll leave time at the end for, for questions. So if I may start to share my screen. We'll get started if I can do this correctly.
So on the bottom of your screen, Frank, there should be a little square with the up arrow.
Yeah. Popping up?
We got you.
Okay. Let me try something real quick. Do you see what's on the screen or do you just see me?
No, we can see your screen, we can see your cursor moving around.
Yeah, not able to get it to start.
Go down to the bottom.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, there you go.
Need to do anything on this bottom right?
Bottom right, there's a little TV, one farthest to the right next to the volume. And you click on that and I'll make it a full screen. Now go over a little bit to your left. More up, up now, up one, right there. Click on that. Not working? Or just double click your first slide?
Almost like it's frozen. I apologize, okay? Well, the title of it is called the Hub. The Hub is the umpire in, in five-person mechanics, right? You're working five officials? Correct?
Yes, we work five, five man officials, or five man crews.
Yeah, and it's, it's also applicable to the seven or eight, but the umpire is the hub. And everybody knows what the hub of the wheel is, correct? It's the center. Let me try this again. Oh, joke, okay.
I don't think I have any PG jokes right now.
You want to try to email it to me and I could, I could run your slides.
Dennis, did you say email?
Yeah, if you want to email it to me, I could run your slides. Talking about this slide.
Hey Frank, while you're working on that, can you tell us how you started in officiating?
I started in baseball. Back in 1991. I started as a baseball official. I was at a substitute teacher at a at a high school and we're working now. Substitute teacher at a high school and when my contract ended there, I began my job at a special ed school, which doesn't have after school program. And I was going to take a year off and look for maybe a walk-on coaching position. And I saw an ad in the paper for baseball umpires. And I went to the general meeting. Had a couple of guys and they convinced me that would be a lot of fun and they were right. Started working freshman JV baseball and loved it. Next year, signed up again and a couple of the baseball officials told me I shouldn't play football. So in 1993, I started working football. And back then, there were a lot of officials, so you had to work your first, first year pretty much for free. There were, there were enough officials back then to work for, for officials and motivate me. And all the new officials would kind of shadow or, or work for free. I worked a ton of games and then just started working in high school, a lot of fun. Started working varsity games after about six years. And then in I started, one of the officials in our association was the crew chief for the USC home games for the chain crew. And he asked me one day to count one for somebody and it was a blast. And I was on that, working their home games for a few years and I thought, watching those officials out there, the Pac-10 officials back then, looked like they were having fun and I, I had an interest in, in college football, joined, joined the association. Started working junior college in 2000, Division III, and 2005. And Ken Rivera hired me in 2008 in the Mountain West. I worked in the Mountain West, the Big 12, and then was hired in the Pac-12 in 2012. All right, let's see. Let's see if this will work. All right, bingo. You see that?
Yes.
Okay, the hub. I wanted to go back. All right. So talking about the umpire and the hub being the center of the wheel, you're the center of the crew. Everything kind of flows around the umpire. The umpire should effectively have knowledge and see everything that goes, that goes on. Referees primarily responsible, you know, for taking care of the quarterback. And getting the information that's, that's necessary when it comes to penalty reinforcements. But the umpire is really the one who, everything flows around the umpire. And I always like to tell officials with whom I'm working and once we're lucky, heard this plenty of times last year, you have to own your position, you have to own the position of umpire, just like any other position. You have to own it, meaning you have to know the mechanics. You have to know how your area, areas of responsibility change depending on the type of play that's, that's presented. And you have to know the other intricacies of working your position. Line scrimmage officials have to know how to deal with both. Umpires have to know how to help manage and deal with the kids inside. And the referee has to be able to manage effectively everything else, the crew. And as well as the coaches. So all of those things that, that go into working your position, you have to own them. And make them your own. And as I present these things, if, if some of the things make sense to you, great. If not, I'll ask questions later, but don't be afraid to try new things and, and to make them your own. How, you know, my mentor, how he works a game is different than, than how I worked it. But I took a lot of things that he did and adapted them to my personality and my style and made them work. Some of the things I tried, I didn't like, I couldn't adapt. So I didn't use it because, you know, it, it just wasn't, it didn't fit into my, my style and the way I think. My pre-snap routine is fairly short. But that's because I can remember it and it becomes automatic. Whereas I know some other officials, we have more detailed pre-snap routines, but they can remember it and that works for them. Okay, and so on every play you're in as an umpire, you're interacting with the crew and you're interacting with the players. You're, right, right there, you are a focal point. Meaning the umpire, you're a focal point. People are watching the game from the stands, you're right in the middle and you stand out. You want to stand out in a positive way. You want people to see them, see you as the umpire, as someone who is moving around, is athletic, who's hustling, who's engaging with the players, who's keeping order. You, and the R, and also for the referee, you're a focal point as well. And that, that is even more emphasized more when it comes to penalty enforcement, because everybody's looking to you. You're the center of the action as the umpire. You're right in the middle of everything that happens. Every once in a while, you're up, you get up close and personal with the players. You can tell this is quite a while ago because of the knickers. Every once in a while, that's going to happen, you got to enjoy it. Again, you're the center of activity, the whole crew, everything revolves around you. The hub or the umpire has to, you have to be a good communicator, not only with the players, but with your crew. And you have to be a good source of information for your referee, because as an umpire, you see what's going on. Oftentimes, the referee is back with the quarterback, maybe hears the roar of the crowd or doesn't hear anything. First person that that person, that the referee is going to look to should be the umpire. Let the referee know what the result of the play was, if it was a pass or it's a complete pass downfield and there's penalty marking. Check with the linesman. When it looks like it's, you know, maybe close to being five yards to the line of gain, get that information. Set that up before, before the game starts and, and have a little hand signal or some way, if you're using the radio. Communicate with the linesman if it's beyond or behind the tape. Then you communicate to that, that to the referee. Well, if there's a offside and it's, it's less than five yards, you're giving the referee that information. Doesn't mean he doesn't have to ask, there's no delay. We know it's going to result in a foul. Block status, you know, with the back judge, ball relays. You're in charge of all that and the players. Be a good communicator with the players, remember that they're kids. Develop a style that's, you know, that, that's comfortable for you. It is effective in communicating with these kids. And football is an emotional game, players oftentimes get emotional. When, when emotions run high, intelligence runs low. As officials and especially as the umpire, when you're in, in the sea of emotion, you have to be the calming effect. You have to be calm and keep your level of intelligence, keep your wits about you. That's one of the most important things that I can convey to you. Get one thing out of this is to remain calm and all around you are, are starting to lose their rational thought. And that will really take you a long way in officiating, if you can be that. The hub, the umpire, you're a focal point. And there's things to focus on before, before the game, during the game, and then even after the game. And it starts with your pregame, even before that. For a lot of us, it starts the, the week of the game. Battle arrangements, who's driving, where are we meeting, do you have a double header? And then when you get to the pregame, and you have to own your position. And you need to share, it's important that you share with your crew, what, what are some of the things that you need to effectively manage the game? What kind of communication do you need from the line scrimmage official? And at the same time, express to them and let them know what you're going to do to help the crew function efficiently. What, what do you do on penalty? Will you, how you handle measurement? How you deal with the players? It all starts in pregame, you have to share that information with the crew. Back in the day when I first started, it was always a referee dominated pregame. And, you know, I'm sure there are still some referees around who, who run the pregame that way. But now it's, it's much more effective if your pregame is a, a joint effort by everyone. Everyone needs to chime in and express what their expectations are, what works with them, what they're going to do to help the crew. And sometimes you're going to have to make minor adjustments, you might have to alter your game a little bit to fit in with, with the rest of the crew. Lucky, do you guys work in crews all year or do you work with different people? Each week?
Uh, this past year, my association up here, we ran and set crews. But, you know, for sub vars and things like that, we work with anybody and everybody.
Okay, and so that goes, even if you're working as crews, every week, I think it's important to discuss certain things in pregame that, that went well, worked well the week before and what you can improve upon. And take charge of that as an umpire. Your keys, they start the engine, they're just like your keys to your vehicle, starts the engine. But once the play starts going, and once you start hitting the road, you've got different areas of which you have to, to watch out for. Just like you're driving, you have to, you know, when your car's going in one direction, you have to look over here. Same thing with once a play starts, you now go from where your keys started, the engine to your areas of responsibility. And that depends on the play. The pass play, is it a, is it a run play? And if it's a run play, is it between the tackles? Or is it a stretch play, is it a sweep? You have to, you know, the keys are important to get you started, but once that play develops or starts, you now go to an area of responsibility as opposed to staying with your one key. If we do that, we're going to miss something, especially with five officials. There's, there's less people out there to watch 22 players. You really have to, to widen your vision and start to focus on, on a bigger area of responsibility. Dead ball officiating. As an umpire, it's, it's essential. You really have to kind of have your head on a swivel. You know, as umpires, we know we're not responsible for progress or marking this part of the ball. So, you know, we should be looking up instead of, you don't need to look at the pile. And I call that, you know, don't be a Gomer pile. Because, you know, what does Gomer pile say and what do we always? Right? You don't want to be surprised by any kind of dead ball action. Want to have your head up and you want to see what's, what's happening. You don't want to, all of a sudden hear that crash and say, shazam, what happened? And you just missed a huge dead ball foul. Segments, segments we used to refer to as chunks. I mentioned before, Tony Correlli, he and Carl Chupers had, had, have a presentation where they talk about their chunks, where they talk about their segments of each play. And when you break it down in this way, it, it makes a, it makes a lot of sense. It's kind of like the ABCs of how to officiate a play. Just like I said, it starts before your game, it starts with your pregame. The things you're going to discuss. And then you have your pregame, your, or excuse me, your pre-snap routine, what are your pre-snap segment? I just have a few examples here, you know, where is the ball? Where's the position of the ball? One thing I would suggest to umpires is that you always spot the ball in position one, two, three, four, five. If you don't know what that, that is, we refer to those positions being the hash mark, number one is always the hash mark on the press box side of the field. Position two is aligned with the upright. Closest to the press box. Position three is smack dab in the middle of the field. Position four is the upright furthest from the press box. And position five is the hash mark opposite the press box. And I would suggest that you always put the ball in one of those spots. You know, don't, don't, you know, split hairs, don't put it, you know, two and a half, three, whatever. All you have to do is, is move the ball maybe a yard and a half and you're right in that position. That helps your referee, that helps you being able to go back to the previous spot. It's just a lot cleaner. But that's part of your pre-snap, where's the ball? And when do you move your lateral indicator? For me as an umpire, as soon as I spotted the ball or as soon as the ball was spotted, I changed my lateral indicator where that was. Okay? I counted. When I counted, when I was finished with my count, I put up my left hand, which had my lateral indicator. That reminded me, did I change my lateral indicator? Put my hand up. There was another reminder, because for me, that was the most important thing, to make sure I knew where the ball was. Are all three teams ready? The offense, the defense, and your officiating team? Was there, was, was there a punt? The back judge is, is all the way back getting a beanbag and it's still not in position? Be cognizant of that and make sure the referee knows. Don't let, don't let the team snap the ball if your officials aren't ready. I'm counting on my habits. Again, you wanted to, you want to develop your pre-snap routine so that it becomes a habit. So that you don't have to think about it, a habit is an unconscious act. That you just automatically put the ball down, change your indicator. As you're doing that, you're looking at your referee, you're making eye contact, there's, there's nothing going on, you can come off the ball. And you're starting your count. You signal, you remind yourself about your lateral indicator. And you find your keys as they're coming up to the ball. Are you using the 42nd clock in New Mexico?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so really, there's no need for the umpire to hatch the ball. You, you still don't have the substitution mechanics in, in high school, correct? They haven't gotten the rule, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so you don't have to hatch the ball. Like we used to see in the old days, the umpire would stay over the ball, referee would count to, to three, put the ball ready for play and the umpire would back, yeah, you don't have to do that. Just be in an area where if you have to, for whatever reason, you can prevent the snap, you can do that from three or four yards away. But, but develop this routine and develop these good habits as part of your pre-snap routine. And so the last thing for me in my pre-snap routine is, you know, I, I would say to myself, the numbers of my, of my guards, I knew the center was. But I would just in my head, you know, 67, 71, clean snap. And then the play goes and that starts the engine, my keys just started the engine. During the play, if the region react to the play, what kind of, I mentioned before, if it's a run play, what kind of run play is it? Is it a stretch play or is it a run between the tackles? Your responsibilities are different depending on that type of play. If it's between the tackles, you're helping with a point of attack. If it's a stretch play, in five officials, you're helping backside or frontside, depending on, on which way the play is going. You have a pass play. You have a pass play, you know, we have different responsibilities. I'm not a big fan of the umpire coming up to the line of scrimmage. I don't think it's necessary until it's absolutely necessary. Meaning, the quarterback starts to scramble and it looks like he might be coming up to the line of scrimmage and he's going to pass. And maybe you make an effort to get up there. Otherwise, if your focus is on getting up to the line of scrimmage, you're losing focus on the action. And the last point I made there, scream, that refers to a screen pass. I hate those. Because all of a sudden, everybody starts running right at you and you gotta get out of the way. You gotta drive through your progressions and flow through traffic. What that means is you're now driving the car. You've already started the engine with those keys. And you're driving and you're looking out for new trouble areas. Where's your area of responsibility on a stretch play? You're now going to those areas and you're flowing with the play. Umpires have to be active and mobile. So when the play moves to one direction, flow with it, keep yourself in a position, work to get the angles to see the action, to see the critical block. Standing still and letting the play go away, 15, 20 yards from you, isn't really going to help. Flow with the play, you don't have to spread, but flow and then move. The hash marks aren't a boundary. I would expect, and when I worked with the officials out here at high school, I expect the umpires to get outside the hash mark. See their hazards ahead of you. As the play starts to wind down, look for the one player who's not slowing down. Keep your head up, don't be a Gomer pile. Look up and see who that one player is who's not slowing down. One is looking to punish someone. Pick up those big dead ball fouls. And if any of you are familiar with Bull Durham, Nick LaLuce wanted to announce his presence with authority. That's what, as an umpire, could be one of your greatest attributes, is to be vocal. For me personally, it took me a while to develop that habit. Because I wasn't naturally someone that had a big voice. It had to be repeated to me over and over. Use your voice. You don't have to yell at people, but you have to use your voice effectively to let the players know that you're there. They know you're there, they're less likely to initiate something that's going to get them in trouble. It's going to cause penalty, that's going to create ill will between the players. So announce your presence, let them know that, you know, the authority is there. One of my favorite movies. After the play segment, and so we've gone during the play chunks, how we're doing after the play, the chunks after the play. We're dead ball officiating. You know, make sure everything's clear. Have in your mind, you know, the all-clear, whatever your all-clear signal is for you. Everyone's going back to their huddle, including your team, the officials. And now you're ready for a football. So you're dead ball officiating, that's one chunk. Everybody's going back, colors are separated. Now you're ready for a football. Whether it's coming from the sideline or the player gave you the football, you've got that. Whatever your next segment is, what you do, if you look at the clock or if you look at the new down marker, that's your next segment, your next chunk. Put the ball down and now you start those good habits. Put the ball down, you change your lateral indicator, you start to count, you find your keys, you've made eye contact with the referee, your team is ready to go. You're back five to seven yards, you're focused and you're ready for a snap. Snap goes, you started your engine and now you're moving again. The key to being effective and to being consistent is to do this over and over and over again for, you know, 150, 200 plays a game. Develop these habits, again, a habit is an unconscious act. These good habits that you do every play. You don't have to think about it, it comes automatically. And then when something out of the ordinary occurs, you're prepared to handle it. You can take time, analyze what's going on and make a decision or help the crew. Questions so far? All right, segment busters. What are the things that can get us in trouble? What can take us out of our rhythm? Injuries, okay? My mentor of mine always told me that there were several things that killed football games. Penalties, injuries, and fights. We can't control injuries, players are going to get hurt. We, to some degree, we can manage the fouls that we call. You know, if you have a play clock, a visible play clock, we can't do a whole lot about a delay of game. You're not using a visible play clock, you can stretch it a little bit. Delays of game, delay of game. And fights, you can do your best to prevent teams from getting into it by being a presence, by making sure you're in there with the players. By catching those cheap shots and penalizing them, give warnings to the coaches, you know, talk to the players. You can do a lot of preventative officiating to minimize the fight factor. Distractions. What are some distractions? One of the, one thing that always kind of got under my skin and I struggled with what I called a needy player. And there's almost always one on every team. That after every play, he wants your attention, he or she wants your attention because they're being held. Or, you know, the other team has their hands in their face all the time. And no matter what you say, no matter how you deal with that player, they never believe you. Or, you know, they just keep coming back more. And that's one of the things that I discovered that took me out of my rhythm. Where I could kind of feel my self getting out of my zone. It was one of, and I could feel my emotions kind of rising a little bit because who's this guy telling me? You know, he's a tight end. I'm not looking at the tight end, but I'm not going to tell him that. You know, I'm going to try and make him feel that I'm listening to him and we're going to be watching. So, kind of identify what are the things that distract you from maintaining your focus. I don't know how you guys on the line of scrimmage do it, but, you know, you've got people in your all game log. How do you manage that? How do you keep that from affecting your performance on every play? This is big penalty enforcement, you've got to own it. You've got to own penalty enforcement. There are three important things when it comes to effective and efficient penalty enforcement. You have to have a penalty marker down. As soon as the play's over and you hear that funny whistle, you see a penalty marker down. You know, communicate to the referee, hey, we've got flag down. Now, is it a spot foul or not? Does that official need to move their flag? And if they do, they should take care of that before reporting to the referee. Do we have a football down to mark the end of the run? That's important also. You're doing all this so that the referee gets the overall picture. If it was not a run, if it was an incomplete pass, you've got the previous start, the previous spot, excuse me. Are the chains staying put? Is that down box where it's supposed to be? And previous spot also has to do with the position, the lateral position of the ball. Which you have on your other hand, your lateral indicator, previous spot with the 25 yard line position two. That's where we're going to enforce the foul. Listen, when the official's coming in to report to the referee, be there to listen to that conversation so that you get the information. Ordinate your penalty enforcement. With whom are you going to enforce the penalty? Who's going to walk with you? Who's on the chain? From where will you be enforcing that foul? How do you do that? Do you have hand signals? Are you using your radio to communicate it all over? Take charge of that and enforce the penalty accurately. Listen, you know what the foul is, you know it's holding. You know it's occurred behind the end of the run. You're going from that spot, you're going 10 yards, you're enforcing the foul. Here's some plays that I put on here from the umpire's perspective that deal with some of the things I was talking about. The first one we're going to look at here is a run play between the tackle and how as an umpire, where we should most likely be watching. As this play develops, you see that the hole opens up in the middle, but the runner bounces outside. You know, and that's going to happen. But our area of responsibility at the snap is now point of attack. What is happening inside the tackle? That's where our focus is going to be. You know, we're looking, everything looks fairly clean, a couple of double team blocks. Nothing major. As now, as the play shifts outside, our area of responsibility changes. Okay, once you feel that he's gone outside, now we shift out and we come and clean up. Dead ball officiate, make sure that the colors separate, the players get up, and they go back to where they're supposed to be. Next play is a stretch play. Hopefully you're set before the snap, this umpire. But when I talk about flow and making your progression, as this play moves to the umpire's right, you want to kind of flow with it and move with your progression. This is an older game where there was no center judge. So the umpire, in this case, is going from the backside to the front. Backside to the second level, I think you can see when the lineman or back come in at the second level, starts up high and falls down low. That's kind of how our progressions take place. With five officials, working referee is going to be on the right side. Let me ask you this, Lucky. Are your referees staying on the right side or alternating, depending on where the quarterback's left or right hand?
They stay on the right side unless the quarterback's, you know, right or left-handed. So if he's left-handed, they'll be on the left.
Okay. I've started, you know, getting away from that, simply because, you know, if you keep the referee on one side of the field, the right side of the quarterback, a lot easier for the umpire to understand that, okay, the tackle that I might have to help on is the opposite tackle from the referee. As opposed to, okay, wait a minute, now where's the referee? Just something to think about. You know, I think it's making it a little more consistent. But, stretch plays, you flow, and then help out as needed. Here is the screen pass. Watch the umpire's movement here. And you start to read pass. Now you can see all the big linemen start to move out. As soon as you see them break and start to go out and read screen pass, you know, you should try and get in as much as you can to officiate from the inside out. Pass, pass, screen. You know, move it a little bit and pivot and pick up the lineman. Linemen in open space don't stop on a dime and they tend to block low. And we have low blocking rule. You see there's a low block lineman that came out that was now in college, that's a foul. But in high school, you can't block low the way. So you need to pick up where those linemen are going on screen passes. That is your area of responsibility. You might recognize this guy. But umpires now are responsible to help with a lot of other things on passes other than just, you know, is the quarterback coming up the line of scrimmage? Is it a trap, catch, no catch? You can help with targeting. You can help with, you know, late hit over the middle. So that's why I encourage you, umpires, to turn on all passes regardless of the type of pass. You know, if you read it's a deep pass, you know, you can feel that it's going way downfield. You may not have to turn as quickly, but I would still suggest that you turn and start to head downfield. But one or two things are going to happen. It's going to be a completed pass, you're going to go down there anyway to spot the ball or it's incomplete. Now you're helping with the dead ball activity and then moving to a position to get a new football. And you see what happens, you get the result of the play. If there's a foul or anything of that nature, you can give that information to the referee. Come on down, we've got a completed pass and we've got a penalty. If it's incomplete, we're coming back. Recognize that guy, Lucky? Hey, I like what the umpire does there. Doesn't feel the need to move up the line of scrimmage. He's in a good position, he's settled, he can see the action going on. Pass goes, turns, and he gets a look at the action. You know, that's a play right there where he can help with, you know, if there was a trap. Receiver muffed the ball as in this case and then stuck his arms out and tried to catch it. Hit the ground, did not. These types of plays, umpires, this is your time to shine. You know, turn, look, incomplete, one nice incomplete signal, that's your time to shine. If it's close, if it's a trap, you know, it's a bang-bang type of play. Kind of like, you know, a runner sliding in at home plate and it's safe and everybody's, you know, it's a winning run. Really close play, give it an emphatic incomplete, win incomplete sign. That's your time to shine. What else do we have here on this play? Okay, not a whole lot of movement. Deeper pass and he still turns. You know, we still need to turn to see the action. Look at the trajectory of this ball, it's high. So these are the types of pass plays where you can help with a targeting. The receiver goes up to try and get the ball and he gets lit up by a defender and they hit him high. You know, your back judge may be just looking at whether or not there's a catch or not. Doesn't see that defender coming in, isn't sure where the contact is. But because you're turning and you're focused and you're looking at the defender, you can be the one to get that. And if, or you might be the one who saw the contact and saw that it was illegal. You can take the back judge off of a potential target. We got the one edge that's tight. All right. Strive for excellence. You want to be number one, be the best official you can be on the field that night. Help your crew be the best crew working on a Friday night. You're the hub, everything revolves around you, own that. And that's it.
Hey guys, if you want to mute yourself and ask a question, feel free. Let me show you put your mute back on when you're done asking the questions, please.
Hey Frank, did any of your baseball background help you with football?
Yeah. I think the timing aspect in baseball, especially working at home plate, you know... plate, you know, you know, let the pitch come in, think about it a little bit, yes, it's a strike, then come out and give you, give you an indication. Kind of similar to how I look at processing fouls. You know, that, that, there's restriction, it's a grab, grab and restrict, grab and restrict, grab, and now you released him, okay, it's not foul. Well, he's got him, he's got him, he's got him, yeah, he's taken to the ground, that's a foul, you know, wait, 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 yeah, it's a foul, strike, foul. I think that, that's kind of helped me with my tempo as far as processing, they're not something we do without, foul. It also, you know, helped me, you know, baseball's kind of a different animal, coaches come out and challenge, can't do that necessarily so much in football, but you still, from time to time, have to, have to deal with it, the coach who wants a question, a timeout or a player. So having that in, in baseball, I think, kind of, you know, prepared me a little bit for when I started with the football. And, and the angles, you know, you want to get the angle, you know, you're working a two-man system, and you're inside, and you've got to play at second base, you have to find the best angle to see the slide and the tag, and the bag. First base, you want to get that, that optimal window, so that you can hear the, the ball hit the glove, see the foot on the bag, and see the first baseman's foot on the edge as well. And taught me that angles are important.
I have a question in reference to the way you stand after you place the ball. So you're about, maybe, let's say, seven, eight yards behind the line of scrimmage, what's your preference, standing straight up, or like in a semi-squat?
My, my preferred position is, is with knees bent and hands on my thighs, so I'm, you know, in a squat, and, and, you know, my weight is even, you know, on the balls of my feet, so that I can, I can move at the snap. But it also depends on what formation is being presented to me by the defense. In other words, can I see the ball? If I have to, if I have to, if I can't move laterally to see the football, and, and I like to stay inside the guards, I don't want to get outside the guards. If I can't see the football, you know, moving from one side to the other, then I might, I might take a step closer, I might be six yards, and I might be standing up so that I can get that angle to kind of see over the nose guard to see the football, and to see at least two of my keys to start. But, all things being considered and being equal, if there's, you know, if I have a, a clear view of the football, I like to stand, you know, knees bent, hands on my thighs. It's, it's your personal preference. What's going to make you most comfortable to officiate the play? If it's standing up, that's, you know, that's great. If, if you're, you know, hands on your knees type of thing, that's fine too, as long as, as long as that works for you and puts you in the best position to officiate the start of the play.
Who is your most, who, what, what mentor helped you the most come up along your way?
Oh, there's so many, but my current mentor is Matt Jordan, he's, he's, he's a current umpire in the, in the Pac-12. Matt took me under my wing when I started working junior college football. I used to send him my tapes from the game. You know, I would leave a blank VHS tape in a self-addressed stamped vanilla envelope for the coach, and ask them for a copy of the game. And if I got it, I would send it to Matt. Matt would look at it, and he would make a comment on every play. And so he was, he'd get me, when he got into the Pac-10, he invited me to USC practices, and I would, and this is one of the days when Pete Carroll was a coach, back when they were, when they were national champions. And their practices were unlike anything I have experienced since. They were like games, they went at it. It was the best experience, the best like experience I could get outside of actually working a Pac-10 game at that time. That was when I was just starting out. So he really did a lot to help me get better. You know, and there were obviously a bunch of others, Al Corry, who was an umpire in Mountain West, is the one that recommended me to Ken Rivera. Just, just, just a whole bunch, but, but my current mentor, Matt Jordan, probably really went out of his way to help me.
Do you have any good Land Clark stories?
I have, yeah, several. You know, Land is often misunderstood. I think he's a great guy, I think he's got a great sense of humor. And the one story that comes to mind, we, we were assigned to the Holiday Bowl, and we was 2010, in San Diego, with Nebraska and Washington. And Nebraska had, had beat the crap out of Washington early in the year, and it turned out that they were matched up in the Holiday Bowl. And it was, Steve Sarkisian was the Washington coach, and Nebraska was the, that madman, I can't remember his name, Matt Colini, he's at Youngstown now, but he was, he could really, really get angry. Anyway, it wasn't going Nebraska's way, Washington was battling him, they were in the game, and at one point, Washington went ahead, and time started running down, and, and we had a foul, both of us had a, a foul for holding against Nebraska in their end zone, resulting in a safety. Well, Nebraska head coach, he just blew his top, slamming his headset on the ground, and we went to media timeout after that, and he called Land over, and chewed Land up one side and down the other. And Land stood there and took it, and then he walked over to me, and said, what was that all about? And, and, and typical Land Clark delivery, deadpan, said, I don't think he liked our holding call. And he turned and walked away. And that was it. It's just classic Land. It was as if it didn't affect him whatsoever, like he went over and had the most pleasant conversation with the coach, came back, said, he just didn't like our holding call. So that's, that's about the only, you know, there's no dirt, I don't have any dirt on Land, but, he's a good man, he, he's done well, and he helped me out as well.
That's a great story. We got time for one or two more questions, guys.
Holding, um, so when you're looking for holding and grabbing, restricting the tackle boxes, obviously there's a lot of grabbing and stuff, but one thing that I've tried to look for is like change of strides in the defender, is there a better way to look for something like that?
It's, it, again, it's, it's all, what, what jumps out to you? What I like to tell people is make that, and make that whole jump out at you, especially when it's in, inside the tackles, you know, a run at the point of attack inside the tackles, you want to see big restriction. There's several indicators that we can, you know, we can talk about. You know, where are the hands? Are the hands outside the frame? Okay, that's an indicator. I call it bad body language, and that might be the same to you as, or they're taking their feet away. You know, unnatural movements made by a defender that are really being caused by the offensive player's bad position. If you've heard, you know, some of the presentations that are going around, I know Steve Strummering and I do one, that we got from Carl Sheffers, who calls it a bad crack. You know, the butt crack of a lineman should be facing the running back, whoever has the ball. And if he's got bad crack, then he's more likely to have to do something illegal to restrict that defender. So, yeah, I have several indicators that I look at, and that's, you know, what's the position of the offensive player making the block? You know, where are his hands? And what type of movement do I see from the defensive player? You know, if, if he's trying to get out, but he can't, you know, then he, that means that that offensive player is restricting him. If it's at the point of attack, that's going to be a foul. You know, you see a sudden jerk, that's not an actual body movement, and they both go down, you can bet that that offensive player has snatched them down. I have several indicators that I look at to help me process that, and then I take that information, and if it haven't affected on the play, is it at the point of attack, is it a takedown? And that's my decision.
Hey Frank, you going to keep the beard for the season?
No, not unless everyone else does, not unless they make an employment to keep the beard. But, no. Hopefully this has to come off very soon. Hey, that looks familiar.
Do you want to close this out and, and thank our guest for me?
Yes, sir. Hey Frank, appreciate it. Thanks for all the knowledge and the, the four-page notes that I got down. And I really appreciate you taking time out this evening, and talking to the crew, and answering questions, I hope everybody got a lot out of it.
Yeah, I, I hope this helps, and again, you know, this is, this was kind of directed at umpires, but I think regardless of your position, if you, if you got one thing out of this, great, you know, I'm happy. Use whatever you can, feel free to, to try some of the things, and make it fit into your, into your officiating toolbox. You know, the, the things you use to manage a game, to manage your position, and then own your position. Be the best official at your position every night that you're out there.
Great, yeah, that's, that's, that's what I got out of SAS last year, you know, own your position, and make your crew better, so. Appreciate you, Frank, and we'll talk to you soon.
My pleasure, good luck, and hopefully we'll, we'll see everybody on the field in the fall.
Thank you, Frank. Jaded.
If not lucky, you know, I might have some availability in the fall, like you said.
All right, just let me know, let me know, I'll put you to work.
I'm good. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, and the webinar, and appreciate everyone showing up again tomorrow, 6:00 PM, Roscoe, talk more about umpire, Mike Contreras on Thursday, Michael Pierre Friday, and Brad Rogers Saturday. Hope to see everybody then.
Thanks, Dennis. See you tomorrow.